I'll let you know if it gets better.
Yeah, a restart is always good, but the time is not exactly perfect.
Who all is in the chamber?
Who's in the chamber? We have councillor Fry and we have councillor Dominado.
Good evening, Jean. Councillor P Fry.
Councillor Dominado, do you want to try to do a sound test from your seat?
Tina? Tina, I'm going to do a restart. It's councillor Kirby Young, so if I have to, I might join by phone. I'll figure this out.
So Hal just turned on your computer here in the chamber, so you should be okay now? Is it working?
One second. Oh, it looks like he's trying now.
Okay. I guess it was asleep here in the chamber.
Okay. No, I'm getting the same message. It says remote access to the server is not enabled and the remote computer is turned off, or the computer is not available on the network. So I'm going to do a restart, and if I have to, I'll dial in on the phone while I'm doing that, okay? Can you hear me, Tina?
And you still hear us, councillor Kirby Young?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we couldn't hear you for a second there, Tina, but we can hear you now.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Bly, do you want to wait a few more minutes while councillor Kirby Young is getting signed in?
Yes, do we actually have quorum?
Yes, we do. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have seven with councillor Kirby Young.
Okay.
So we have quorum without councillor Kirby Young, but even though it's a public hearing, it might be good to just take a few more minutes?
Yes, so I'm seeing myself, councillor Carr, councillor Swanson, councillor Boyle, councillor Kirby Young, and councillor Fry, that's six, so I'm not sure who the seventh is.
We have councillor Dominado as well.
In the chambers?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll really rely on you to keep track of quorum because I can't see that readily here.
Of course, so if I see any issue, I'll job you.
Great.
Over to you, Deputy Mayor Bly.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I will now call the public hearing of September 23, 2021 to order. And we are reconvening from September 21, 2021. So this council, for the purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. And to ensure that quorum is maintained throughout the meeting, please let the clerk know if you leave the meeting. The meeting is convened by electronic means as authorized under the Order of the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General of the Province of British Columbia Emergency Programme Act, Updated Ministerial Order Number M192. As such, council members have the option to participate by phone, and as chair of this meeting, I am also participating by phone. Please note, if my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we will recess the meeting until my connection is restored. And if council loses connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll need to recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council loses connection during the voting process, we have staff on hand to facilitate getting you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by @Vancityclerk. A video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh nations. We thank them for having cared for this land, and we look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also wanted to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Deputy City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart is absent. Councillor Carr?
Here.
Councillor De Genova?
Present.
Councillor Fry? Councillor Swanson?
Here.
Councillor Hardwick has a leave of absence. Councillor Weeb has a leave of absence. Councillor Boyle?
Present.
Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Bly is in the chair. Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
The hearing has quorum. Deputy Mayor Bly?
Thank you very much. So before we begin, I have some announcements. Following updated guidance issued on September 10, 2021, there is a maximum allowable capacity for public in-person participation permitted in the council chamber for local government meetings and public hearings under the Provincial Health Officer Order on Gatherings and Events, virtual participation, gathering and events, sorry, and virtual participation is highly encouraged. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. As of August 25, 2021, masks are mandatory in all indoor public spaces, even if you are vaccinated until further notice. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver, if not already provided. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter, @Vancityclerk, for updates on the progress of the meetings, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearingcomments. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, and only if those represented are also present or on the line, and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next. We are currently working on updating the meeting systems to enhance our user experience during the meeting. Staff are monitoring the updated systems and users may experience some possible delays or deviation from normal practices. Please be patient while we work to address any issues as a result of the upgrade. And we do appreciate your patience as we are starting a few minutes behind tonight to get some of that worked out. I also want to note that City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including the utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. Almost there. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may do three things: one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. On Tuesday, September 21, council completed items one through five, and tonight we will continue with item six. CD1 rezoning 3449 and 3479 West 41st Avenue and 5664 Collingwood Street. So before we move ahead to application summary, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to ask that the clerk now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
There's an application by Secozy Architecture to rezon 3449 to 3479 West 41st Avenue and 5664 Collingwood Street, from residential district to comprehensive development district. To permit the development of a six-story residential building with 109 secured market rental housing units, a height of 21 meters and a force-place ratio of 2.7 feet are proposed.
Thank you very much.
The General Manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list and receive a public comment. 146 pieces of correspondence in support, four pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5 p.m. today.
Thank you very much. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 93262PAN before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We have Chi Chan, rezoning planner at the Res zoning Centre Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, here to present the application. And I just want to make sure if staff are talking, we can't hear you just at this moment, so...
Hi, Chi. Do you mind unmuting yourself? Thanks.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council. My name is Chi Chan, rezoning planner for this file. I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, just confirming that you can see that on the feed.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm the rezoning planner for, to rezon 3449 to 3479 West 41st Avenue and 5664 Collingwood Street under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy. The subject site shown here in red is made up of four lots to the northeast corner of West 41st Avenue and Collingwood Street in the Dunbar neighborhood. These lots are zoned RS5 residential and currently developed with four detached houses.
Quite a privilege, Chair. Sorry to interrupt. There's screen, it seems to be a tiny version. I don't know if that's me or if it's showing for the public. On my public screen, it looks like it's not full screen.
Yes, thank you very much. I am going to draw the clerk's attention to what's being displayed to the public. The large screen is black, and the small screen is...
Deputy Mayor Bly, it is the clerk here. We are just working on, something technologically went wrong with the screen in the chamber? It is, I believe. We were just checking it. If you want to give us a moment, we can make sure that it's working.
Yes, I think so. Just, it's not possible for the public to see what's being streamed right? So Chi, if you don't mind, just holding on just a moment, we'll get our clerks back to us when they're ready to go.
We're in an awkward silence here, Deputy Mayor Bly. We're still working on it.
Okay, no problem. Shall we go to a recess?
Let me just check with IT to see if that's necessary. I'm hearing from our IT staff that we do need a recess to get this fixed.
Okay, so how about a five-minute recess, and we'll come back at 6:25 and pick it up?
Yes, thank you, and our apologies.
Okay, thanks very much.
The
We are not seeing speaker number 11, but if you just give me a second, we'll do a double check. No.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Speaker number 12, Samuel Axelson.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have five minutes to speak to council, please go ahead.
Awesome, thank you so much for having me, council. I just wanted to come here today to say that I support this application because the city is in desperate need for more rental housing, especially on the west side of Vancouver. I unfortunately had to rent housing since I was 18 years old, I'm 23 now. I've always had the unfortunate opportunity to have to live paycheck to paycheck to pay rent and/or have people live with me, so having an opportunity like this could really broaden, you know, people like me who struggle with the same kind of thing, who didn't have the opportunity or financial help from their parents or anything like that, or the city. I also just think that having it on the west side of Vancouver, there is, like I've heard before, quite of a rich standard around there, and I think that having a more diverse group of people, artists, entrepreneurs, business creators, students going to UBC, just having a lot more opportunity for them to have a space for housing so that they don't feel as, you know, stressed out to live, you know, in the tri-cities because it's cheaper out there. Thank you for taking my time to speak.
Thank you, and if you just remain on the line, we do have a councillor that has questions.
For sure.
Yeah. Councillor Johnson, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for coming in. I just wondered if you could tell me what your idea of affordable is for, say, a studio or a one-bedroom?
For a studio for a one-to-a-one-bedroom affordable, I would say between $1,100 and $1,350.
Okay, so did you know that a studio in this new building is probably going to be over $1,800, maybe more than that by the time it gets built? Would you still support the project if you knew it was $700 a month more than what you're thinking is affordable?
Yes, I still would, because by that time, I think, with supply and demand, everything else will fall into place, and I believe that where my, you know, career is going and where I think a lot of other young people's careers going in Vancouver, that by the time that the building is done, it'll be an affordable place for all of us to live.
Do you think the rents will come down?
I'm really hopeful that the rents will come down. I mean, as a young person, doing the best that I can at 23, just living month to month, I think it'll be an amazing opportunity for everyone's rent to afford eventually, hopefully, go down.
Well, I hope they come down too, but I don't think it's going to be by doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, and thank you very much for your comments tonight to the speaker. There's no more questions for you, but we appreciate you coming.
Thank you so much, have a nice night.
And you too. Next, we have speaker number 13, Teresa Juba.
It's the clerk here, Deputy Mayor Bly. We understand Teresa Juba is on the line. Are you there, Teresa Juba? It might be a muting problem. If you can give staff a moment, we'll see if we can help.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that works. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, great, so you are, yes, you can go ahead, you have five minutes to speak to council.
Great, thank you. So I am speaking on behalf of the Dunbar Residents' Association, and we did submit some correspondence, so that's in Appendix A, so... But before I speak, I was wondering if someone could answer a question for me. If the drawings that are included, are they the final drawings that incorporate the comments and recommendations that are included in Appendix B?
So what I can do, because the way that this works is as a speaker signed up to address council, you provide comments to us. If that's a question that you have, perhaps a councillor will note that down and ask that of staff when the time comes after the speaker's list.
I understand, thank you. So... So we did review the proposal with the developer, and we weren't in support of it at that time. We have reviewed also the requirements in Appendix B and that from the urban design panel, and to see a lot of improvements. I had no idea, I had no awareness of the rent, and those are really high. But we're looking in terms of, we were looking at the project in terms of livability and in fit with the neighbourhood. And in terms of livability, studios are so small. When I look at the drawings, it's almost like you have to squeeze around the bed to get into the living space. And we also see that there's 51% studios. But if this project is located in our neighbourhood in Dunbar, we would hope that it would meet some of the requirements for Dunbar, and we really need more family housing, and I did hear that some speakers say they really support family housing. And so one of our recommendations would be to increase the smaller units and significantly reduce the studio. There's not, I don't see... I don't see great living spaces with the studio apartments. And I would hope we would design for our neighbourhood rather than for UBC. We have such great schools and parks, and they're perfect for young families, and they, you know, they are looking for ways to come into the neighbourhood. So also, we had some concerns about the appearance of the building. It seems like, I have read comments about it could be more friendly. Although there have, I'm not sure if all the recommendations are in this slide, but it still looks institutional. And we would love to have a more residential appearance to the building, and I was wondering if there is anything, any adjustments that could be made to the appearance of the building. And we would also like clarity around the setbacks to the south, especially given its proximity to the B-line. It really wasn't, it wasn't that easy to tell from the drawings. And if there was an opportunity, we would love more consultation with the Dunbar Residents' Association before it goes through to the development permit stage. So if I have, I don't know what my time is, how much time I have left?
You have another minute.
Okay, so just speaking broader, we're actually interested in gentile density throughout the neighbourhood, and we'd be really happy to consult on it. I would also just add, in terms of, I live in a multi-family housing, and we do have families that come into the neighbourhood that are wanting to have their children go to these schools, and they're not paying these rents. We live in a beautiful building with a roof deck, and I really find these rents quite... I don't know, very surprising, I would say. So... At the time, I wanted to say that I really appreciate the eyes that the city has had on this project in terms of the landscaping and really improving the amenity spaces and the setbacks.
That is your time, that is your time. So that's great, but you do have questions from councillor Carr to start. Councillor Carr, over to you.
Yes, thanks very much, Chair. Hi, thanks for calling in. So first of all, just a couple of questions. First of all, I very much appreciate your response to Appendix B and the conditions for approval. Those conditions, I read those too. Respond to the public input that has been provided, and I'm sure the Dunbar Residents' Association was part of that process of supplying input, so that's, I mean, it's really your raising of issues and the public raising of issues that got those less of improvements. You asked about the... You asked um about the um the uh small units, and I'm not sure like the um the smaller and I'm not sure if you talked about increasing the size or the number. Um can you just clarify that for me?
Yes, less studio apartments and more larger apartments. I would say especially three-bedroom, because that will accommodate a family with two children.
Okay, that's good. Um in terms of the points, um the next two points you made, you wanted some information about uh the step backs. I noticed that um that in the um report itself, it talks about that the step back to the north is is there, but um you talked about to the south. So I wonder if you could explain that a little more for me?
Oh, uh we were we just went clear um um from the drawings, how much of a setback there is from um um from the street.
Okay, so it's not the stepping back of the building, which is to the north. It's the setback from the street on the south. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um and uh then you talked about um wanting more consultation with with um the developer as they move through the um the next stages, especially um regard, I think regarding um the conditions of approval. Uh I don't have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Uh at this point, they do get to respond, uh but my own questions can go to staff after this point, but I'm just hoping by this conversation that the applicant will um will think about responding with um with your request to ha- to your request, which you've just stated, uh to uh work with them around improving the application um and around the issue of the of the setbacks. Um so I I can only encourage that at this point, but I appreciate so much uh the work of the Dunbar Residents' Association in responding to issues and your presence and speaking to the issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Carr. Uh Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. Um Councillor Carr touched on a couple of my questions. So I'll just focus it on on one, and you had commented that um you're a bit surprised by the level of the rents, um which my understanding is are based on sort of average rents in the west side area for newer market rental buildings, and I'm just wondering if um you are aware of that, or if you could expand a bit more as to why you were surprised by the rents?
Um I guess because I'm thinking of our own building, um uh which is located in in North Dunbar, and uh and uh just the spaces are larger and um um say, for instance, we actually have um one and two bedrooms that will uh go for rent to young families that would like to um have their children go to school here. And uh so um compared to uh the size of the of the unit, I just personally, I find that the um the uh the uh the uh cost, the uh rental cost surprising. That that's all I can say. It's
Is it an older, can I ask, is it an older building that you're in, or?
Personally, you know, quality of living of living in like a hundred and nine-unit building, to me, that's it's it's a pretty dense, it's a pretty dense um uh living space.
Okay, um just follow up by, is it an older building um that you're in? Is that I wonder if that's one reason why you're seeing such a difference in terms of the size of the units?
It's concrete construction. It's fourteen years. It's not old, no.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um to uh to the speaker, um we do appreciate you coming, and those are all your questions for tonight.
Um thank you very much.
Thank you. Um so speaker number fourteen, Mercutio Bosniak.
Hello?
Hi there. We can hear you. You can please uh go ahead with your remarks to council. You have five minutes.
Thank you, and thank you, council, for uh your time. Uh my name is Mercutio. I live and rent in the Vancouver West Side, and I am in support of this proposal. I grew up um in West Point Gray and volunteering in Dunbar and in Kits. And uh there's been a big shift in my friend group and my age of people leaving the lower mainland almost altogether, and it's specifically nowhere near the west side due to the price and due to um how hard it is just to find housing and to find a place to rent to live. Um recently, my girlfriend was trying to find a place to live, and it took her nearly two months just to find a uh a place for her and a roommate to split, um and that was just because of supply, not because of um there being two of them. And uh this is the same for me and my mom. Uh I would say five months ago, it took us about a month and a half just to get into a showing, and that actually went towards a legitimate conversation towards renting. Um so any more supply within Vancouver, specifically on the west side, I'm in big support of. Um I think we need more density, and having density near public transit is not only better for the environment, um because I'm assuming more people be more likely to take transit than to own a car. Um but I think it's just a great opportunity to build up Vancouver's rental supply, and hopefully that'll affect the market, but that's a whole different conversation. Um yeah, I'm a big fan of this. Um would love to see it happen, and I have the dream of living back on the west side, um specifically in Dunbar. I'm more towards uh West Point Gray right now with my mother.
I can give you a dish. Chair?
Oh, Councillor Kirby Young, Councillor Kirby Young, just checking that you're on mute. Great, thank you. Uh okay, please go ahead, speaker. Apologies for the interruption.
Oh, no worries. Um yeah, I was just saying, you know, I'd love to live again back um in the Dunbar specific area someday, and so that's not really gonna happen unless there's options. So more options, the better. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um do appreciate your comments. There are no questions for you, but we appreciate you coming to speak to council.
Thank you.
So I am going to do a second call, and then we'll check to see if there's any unregistered speakers on the line. Um so if there's there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code nine three two six two pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream, and that would be my second call. And then I am going to check now to see if we have any new unregistered speakers that have joined the line. Clerks?
Yes, Deputy Mayor uh Bligh, we have a speaker number fifteen who has called in, Theo Burkener.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh so Theo Burkener, you on the line?
Yeah, I I uh I'm here.
Great. Would you just mind um confirming for us if you're a resident of Vancouver?
I actually currently am a resident of North Vancouver.
Of North Vancouver, okay, great.
Grew up in Dunbar. Yeah.
Okay, happy to hear your comment. Understood. Okay, happy to hear your comments. You have five minutes to speak to council. Please go ahead.
Okay. Uh thank you for considering this, guys, and for hearing my take on it. Uh I am born and raised in Dunbar, Twenty-second and Collingwood, right in the heart of, you know, the beautiful tree-lined streets and uh single-family home zoning, and my parents downsized a number of years ago into a small one-bedroom rental property down in along Alma Street in a building that is of deteriorating condition. Um but there really aren't that many other options around the area that they have made their home for the last forty-five years as immigrants uh from Sweden originally and Dunbar residents since the late seventies. Uh so I am in huge favour for more rental stock in the Dunbar area, the Point Gray area, the Kitsaln- that's it's a sort of western Kitsalno area, not only for young families and growing families and couples the likes of my wife and I, who are in our thirties and have two young kids and live in North Van, but in many ways would love to live in Vancouver. My wife works at Vancouver General, and I'm self-employed, um but we're big Kitsalno beach people. But also for downsizers and for older folks who don't necessarily have the capacity or the desire to maintain a home that they perhaps owned for a long time prior, or have always been renters for whatever reason. Um there's sort of a very binary equation with regards to the type of housing stock that is available in that part of town, and I think it needs to be less homogeneous and more mixed, both rental of the old and new stock, and I think this is a great project to add to that um account of rental homes. So yeah, I'm for it. I support the project. And I think the rental rates, while to many people they might feel they're quite high, um as has been discussed, are, you know, commensurate with the values that we see in Vancouver, and especially on the west side, and such is unfortunately the reality of living in Vancouver. But as we grow the rental pool, I believe those rates will come down to a certain extent as well, just given by supply and demand. So that's my take on it. Thanks very much for listening. I'm done.
Uh and thank you very much for um joining us tonight. Uh those your there are no questions for you.
Okay, perfect. There we go. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh so we will now um do our third call for speakers, and then we will take a five-minute recess um to allow those speakers to join. So third call for speakers. If there's any additional um speakers to this item, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code nine three two six two pound before, and actually, this is um going to be your last chance, um and the phone number is also going to be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So uh council, we will take a five-minute recess now, and we'll see you back here at seven forty-six.
There were no additional speakers, but just give me a moment so I can double-check with staff. And no, we have no no additional speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. So seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speaker's list is now closed. Um as few or no public comments were received on this item after five P M. today, I suggest we close the receipt of public comments and move on to the hearing closing comments, ask further questions of staff, and then to make a decision. So we'll start with the applicant. Uh are there any closing com- uh comments from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No further comments from us. Thank you.
Thank you. And staff, any closing comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um so finally, we'll be looking to see if council has any questions of staff. Seeing no, oh, Councillor Carr. Okay, thank you very much. So Councillor Carr, over to you.
Yeah, thanks so much, Chair. Um I uh just wanted to ask, um because I did raise this question, or not the question, I was really um uh responding to the last speaker or the speaker um from the Dunbar Residents' Association. They expressed a willingness to um to actually work with the um with the applicant around some issues that they still have. Um they seem to have been quite responsive to and positive about the um the uh efforts made already by the applicant in terms of addressing public concerns, in terms of the conditions of approval. But I am wondering, staff, if um if you can facilitate if that's appropriate or not, um or if you can uh receive some indication from the applicant as to whether or not they would be willing to have any further conversations with the Dunbar Residents' Association around the further issues that they have, uh specifically regarding setbacks, which is one they specifically mentioned.
Uh thank you, Councillor Carr, for the question. Uh yes, if this uh application proceeds to the development permit stage, there is a formal consultation with the public with notification. Uh staff can receive comments and then pass those on to the applicant.
Okay, so they just they just have to track the progress of this? There's no outreach to them um prior to uh the development permit application?
No, but there will be a development sign that goes up on the site as well as the city webpage.
Okay, so if they're still listening in, I I'm hoping that they take note of that. Okay, thank you. Okay, so if they're still listening in, I'm hoping that they take note of that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Carr. Councilor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I have one follow-up question to staff. And that relates to the discussion that's happened tonight between, really with respect to unit size and then also with the feedback that was received and the setbacks that were increased. And I'm wondering if you can provide a bit of explanation as to how the setbacks were increased. Does that impact unit size at all, or was it achieved a different way, or can you comment on that?
Thank you, Councilor, for the question. So following feedback from the public and the Urban Design Panel and staff review, so the setbacks on the north side of the building were shifted downward. They moved it from eight to 10 feet. On the east side of the building, they were moved from seven feet to 12 feet. There was no real change in the FSR. It was a reshifting of where the units were and no change necessarily to the unit. There are slight touches up, but generally the unit sizes stayed the same.
Okay, so reflecting back then, because we heard feedback in terms of the desire for the greater setbacks, but also comments on the smaller units, but one didn't impact the other. Both were able to be achieved. That's what I'm hearing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Kirby Young. So seeing no other councils on the queue to ask questions, we now will move to make a decision on this application. So I'll be looking. Councilor Swanson, I see your name just got up on the queue, and I know we're working with a new system here. Did you want to ask questions?
No, I'm good. I jumped a gun, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm happy to move it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Boyle. We need a second, there?
Kirby Young.
Thank you, Councilor Kirby Young. And now we'll move into debate with this application being moved and seconded. So is there any debate? Councilor Swanson, over to you.
Yeah, thanks. I'm suspecting that there was some sort of organized campaign to get people who believe in the supply, supply, supply mantra to come and support this. And it was interesting because several of them didn't understand that the housing that they were supporting was as expensive as it's going to be, or that the units were as small as they're going to be. I don't share that blind faith that supply, supply, supply is going to lower rents. I don't think there's any proof that it will do that. I have no problem with increased density on the west side. But I think we need to have a clear idea of what is really affordable and what people in the city need in terms of what's affordable. I just did some calculations. And when I retire, if I ever retire, a studio apartment in this building would be 100% of my pension income, 100%. A studio apartment is about the same as the entire income for a social assistance recipient for a year. It's $22,000 higher than the median household income for a renter for a studio. So, you know, and then other people are thinking that this is the answer to the housing crisis. When this is the type of housing where the company that owns the building, their goal is going to be to make a profit. They'll be able to benefit from the property appreciation, and they'll be able to increase the rent every year. And because they're a profit-making company, they'll have the incentive to increase the rent every year. It's pushing for this kind of housing is actually playing into the financialization of housing, which people are talking about more and more, how housing is becoming a financial asset rather than a human right. So I think the whole setup is not a setup that's going to help us with the housing crisis. This certainly isn't going to help us with the housing crisis, especially for the people that need housing the most. On the other hand, it's pet-friendly. It won't gentrify. And the housing will be a little bit cheaper than the housing that's in that neighborhood now. So I'm probably going to end up supporting it, even though I've never basically heard in my 72 years of rents going down. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Swanson. Councilor Boyle.
Thanks so much. So I will be supporting this. As council has probably heard me say a couple times at this point, I grew up very close to here. I grew up about three blocks from this corner. I have seen that neighborhood lose a lot of the children who were raised there, who can't afford to live anywhere nearby. And I can tell you, as someone living on the other side of the town, a lot of folks who can't afford to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in are putting additional housing pressure on housing in other neighborhoods across the city. I think that dynamic across the city is really important, that we continue to add housing for generational growth, as well as for new people wanting to move into the neighborhood. I think, you know, I would rather, again, council has heard me say this, the public has heard me say this, I would rather that we were building co-op or non-market housing there. I would rather we had policies in place that allowed the amount of density and the streamlining that made that financially viable. And I continue to hope we move in that direction. But looking at the proposal we have on the table, I do think it's an improvement in terms of affordability. I know that single-family homes in that neighborhood go for 3 million plus. And so having market rent secure housing where people can live and know they'll be able to stay for a while, they're not in someone's basement, they're not at the whim of an individual household owner as their mortgage helper. They have security of tenure, and they can call what I know is a great neighborhood home for a long time. I think that's important. So will this solve the crisis? Absolutely not. Will it make rents go down on its own? Probably not. But I do think it's an important addition to the neighborhood, and I am happy to support it.
Thank you, Councilor Boyle. Councilor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think for me, this one is, I think it's important to me. I wasn't going to make comments, but I was compelled to, been hearing some of the other closing comments from my colleagues. And yes, we received a lot of letters in support, 146 in support, four opposed, and then one with some specific feedback from the Dunbar Residents Association. And yes, that's a lot of letters. But what I also heard on the phone tonight was real-life experiences from real people. So you know Allison, the renter who indicated that we need more supply, the mom of three children who rents and finds it's finding it hard to do so, the young gentleman who's living at home and would like to see supply such as this, the 23-year-old who said that he may not afford this now, but it's important to see more supply. Or the speaker from North Vancouver who spoke about it's not just for younger generations, but it's also providing alternatives for people to, that may be downsizing. And I don't think you can underestimate the importance of aging in place and people being able to stay in their neighborhoods at that point in their lives, when everything in there is familiar, their neighbors, the shops, all of the amenities, and that sense of community and connection. I don't subscribe to the philosophy that we should, that, you know, that has happened often with this council voting against these projects because they're not affordable enough, or, you know, sort of getting into debate about the supply argument. Because I think we have to just be pragmatic and recognize that if we say no to a lot of these projects overall, there will be more pressure, an upward price pressure on rents and on a limited supply without continuing to provide and grow options. And I think what I heard a lot tonight, and I think is important, is that neighborhoods are organic, and they should be evolving and changing. And I think mix is good. It's good to have some vibrancy. It's good to have some diversity in terms of age and demographics and enabling people to stay in their neighborhoods where they lived. We hear a lot from small business that not having a customer base or loss of services. And when you get that hollowing out, you do, I think, lose that sense of community. So I think that it's important to approve a lot of these projects. Yes, I too also would like to see and recognize that we need things like more co-op and more below-market housing. But the reality is that 80% of the land is currently privately owned in Vancouver. And it's far better, I think, to see a rental project that's coming forward with a reasonable degree of family-sized units than something like even Stratocondo or redeveloped into more single-family homes, which are just beyond the level of anybody to afford these days. So I think it's sort of really important to just, I don't know, be straight up about it and kind of recognize the fact that we have a variety and a diversity of residents in the city of Vancouver, and they need a variety and a diversity of housing types. And that is a good thing. And so I'm happy to support 106 secured market rental units. I appreciate the engagement from the committee on this that came in and some of the adjustments that were made with respect to things like setbacks. I'm glad to hear that that didn't put any pressure on the size of the units, because units are getting smaller, and that is a tension as you're building new buildings, and the cost of construction goes up. So unfortunately, we're not seeing the same size of units that when people were building 15 years ago or 30 years ago. So sometimes we just have to kind of be clearer around the environment that we're working in and try to deliver strong policy and some good options for people. And I think this does that. Thank you.
Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Bye. You know, I was on council when the Affordable Housing Choices entry resorting policy was put forward. And I must admit that I was, it was 2012, I was pretty appalled at the time because it arose out of the mayor's task force on housing affordability. There was really no public consultation at all. It was just landed on the council table and with a very impromptu set of recommendations put forward to implement it, which allowed for, one, I guess, two, well, anyway, it was explained by staff, there's a limited number allowed in a 10-block period piece of real estate, but throughout the whole city. I mean, it was, and affordability was only ever addressed in terms of that it's rental, not condos. And we were at that point in a real, I think, surge of condo development within the city. So I guess that made sense to some people. But I felt even at that time and have continued to feel that it doesn't address the real affordability crisis. So I think Councilor Swanson is right. You know, it's a form of housing that was not, at the time, condo. So it was more affordable than condos, but doesn't really get at the prices. And it's not intended to. I don't believe it ever was intended to really get at the deeper elements of the crisis that we have in terms of affordability for the people who primarily are renters, who primarily have incomes that are below $50,000 a year. And that still needs to be solved by council. However, I am willing to support this because it is rental housing, and it is in a neighborhood, the response to which by the Dunbar Residents Association was, you know, I think, an acknowledgement of and appreciation of some changes to the design elements in terms of the conditions of approval, which reflect the response to public input on the application. And I appreciate those as well. I would encourage the applicant and staff to reach out to organizations like the Dunbar Residents Association to ensure their concerns around any other design elements are incorporated and at the very minimum, considered. Although it was stated that they should, the Dunbar Residents Association and any other residents should go through tracking this as it moves forward. But, you know, there is a, I think, I've seen at previous public hearings, you know, the outreach happen as well, and I would encourage that to happen in this case. And just recognize that those conditions of approval that did change, I think, are good. You know, in terms of reallocating outdoor amenity space and the children's play areas to areas with increased access to sunlight, additional screening on balconies, and additional retention of trees. I think these are all much more responsive changes to requests about people who are concerned about quality of life and a fit within the neighborhood. So as I say, I do appreciate that. And because of those changes and a response from the Dunbar Residents Association and appreciation of those changes, and because it is rental housing and it's a good addition to the neighborhood, I will support.
Thank you very much, Councilor Carr. And that brings us to a vote. Parks, if you could please. And that patient passes with no one in opposition. So thank you very much, council. That brings us to the end of our business public hearing agenda. We need a motion to adjourn.
Adjournment, Councilor Kirby Young.
Boyle.
Thank you, Councilor Boyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much to staff and everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks for chairing.
Thank you. It was great.
Thanks, staff.
You did a good job, Chair. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.